Well, this creek can be the council. Scott's taking a brick, I think. Anyway. Okay, we're here to go over these budgets. Keep the laughter to a minimum. Any comments before we start?
We won't start it.
I guess at the beginning. Jane's been putting out a lot of emails. I'm trying to figure out what's what.
I think we're gonna have to discuss what we're gonna do about exempt, non-exempt.
About what?
I believe we're gonna have to discuss what we're gonna do about this exempt, non-exempt. The people who probably don't know that. Does that fix the payroll?
Talk about 40 hours versus salary, overtime versus salary. Basically what you're saying.
I'll explain that, Jane.
You're the auditor.
I think that would be a better conversation for the Salary and Wage Committee to discuss and come back, because if y'all read my email today, I think there's some question of who even qualifies, but that's not a conversation that I feel comfortable going in right now.
I agree. It's had a lot of time discussing that. It needs to be kind of narrowed down.
Well, let's start with the first one here on page two. I'd guess would be the animal shelter. That's one of the easy ones. And, well, I've got several questions on it. On 20285, on repair and maintenance, asking for $3,000. I don't remember what that was for, Jane. Do you remember? No, neither.
Did he say something about his truck needs work on?
Yeah, vehicles.
Twenty vehicle repairs.
Got to check here, $20,000 in utilities. Chucked the tire to the truck, $3,000, and tires, $1,600.
Now, the utilities was because of the new building.
Yeah.
He increased utilities.
Why would a new building need more on utilities than one that last year budgeted 15,000, he spent 7,000 so far this year?
Because they added. They added a building. They didn't replace the old building. They added a building.
Yeah, he added more load.
Yeah.
So you think the 20,000 is okay on that?
I look to see how that can get any issues.
Any other questions on the animal shelter?
What else can he spend on his donation account, Jane?
Um, pretty much anything unless the don... If the person who donated money made it specific, like sometimes we'll have donations where they specifically say it's only to spay and neuter, then that's all he can spend. But if they just give a generic donation with no stipulation, he could spend it for any purpose, for the shelter.
Yeah.
Jane, how much has he gotten that far? Do you have an idea? Donations?
Yeah, I can tell you here in a second.
Let's talk about it for a bit.
64,000.
Are all the bills paid on the new?
Yes, most of that was covered by grants, and it has all been. Everything that's been submitted so far, yeah, I believe there's nothing else.
There's no outstanding on that.
Right.
So the 64,000 is money he can use with our permission at any point in time for any of his expenses, right?
Yes.
We're trying to fall within budget here. Is that an estimate on his truck repair?
It would be.
What was that repair and maintenance for? It wasn't for the truck.
I don't...my notes don't say. I just study it. My notes only say requested increases in several lines, including 5,000 in utilities because of the new building.
Scott might know. On page two here on 20285, repair and maintenance, he was asking for 3,000. And did he say what was four?
I didn't have anything in the notes about it. I understand that there's a new building there, but I didn't know if that came up out of an error.
We just found, see, Jane just told us he has 64,000 dollars in donations.
Yeah, I mean, when I was looking at it, I took it out, but I didn't know how anybody else felt about it.
What was that on Scott?
On the repair and maintenance that he's talking about.
$3,000.
Yeah, I mean, when I was going over it, I took it out.
There shouldn't be much repair and maintenance required on a new building, should there?
No, I wouldn't think so, but...
We haven't still got an old facility there.
You're right. Go ahead.
He's got other services too, though.
I had that checked also, Scott.
I would take that one myself.
Well, I mean, you know, he's got 3,500 in other supplies. I mean...
2,500 in maintenance and repair.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I only put like 2,000 in building maintenance and repair, so I don't know. I mean, I don't think, personally, I don't think we need to have that there, and that there should be enough, like other supplies that he could transfer if he needed it that bad.
Neil, are you aware of any major repairs that need to be done?
He just talks about doing some work in the old section, but I don't, I'll top my head, I don't remember what it was.
You can take that out of that donation spread, Jane.
Well, actually, we've got two minutes. One, another for 2,500, building maintenance, repair, and the repair and maintenance, so what's the difference on 30202?
One's a supply line, and one is a service line. So the supply line is if he was buying his own repair and maintenance supplies, and then the service line, the 3,000, is if we're paying someone else to come in.
Well, we're two-thirds through the year. He's used less than $1,000 so far this year. That's the same amount as budgeted last year, but...
Just go ahead and take it out. Repair and maintenance, if he needs it, I think. Well, Mike, you can take donations if he needs it.
Sorry, was that the repair and maintenance supplies?
Yeah. Repair and maintenance.
Did the audit win or cut?
Honestly, I would, I would take the building maintenance and repair from 2,500 to 2,000. I mean, um...
Yeah.
Because the, the average, I mean, his average over the last four years has only been like 400 dollars. So even if he wants to do a bigger project in the older section, he's still got some money there.
I would take it down to 1,000.
Okay, so building maintenance and repair, you're cutting it to 2,000, and...
Well, Kate would like to see it at 1,000, so...
1,000?
Looking at the last prior years.
Okay.
So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Tires for 1,600. He's not used any money from 1,200 from last year.
Well, I mean, he's, he's used about, oh, he said tires, he's used about 450 so far this year.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, the screen here is more updated than our book, so...
So 1,600. We're gonna go to 1,000 on that.
I would agree with that.
You do or don't?
I do.
You do?
The tires. Take it from 1,600 to 1,000. Leave the truck repair alone?
Yeah, because he said he had some stuff he had to get done.
He's never spent more than $9,000 on utilities. He's needing 20,000 for our new building. I just don't...
I would recommend taking the truck repair down. If he needs more, I could go from donations.
Put a lack of 15?
I would.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, he said during his time in the budget hearings that he had made a mistake and that he meant for that to be 1,500 anyway, so that's, that's good.
Truck repair. 15,000.
But the utilities, I mean, I'm kind of with you, Bob. I think 20 is probably a little high.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with taking it back to 15.
Okay.
What, I mean, is that okay with you guys?
Sure.
Any other questions on it?
I'll back up on top on the office supplies. That's really high compared to history.
Well, what about 500 there to start? On what, Scott? On the office supplies? You think that's all right?
Normally for county general departments, they pay for their office supplies out of the commissioner's budget, so I'm not sure why he's got an office supply line at all.
So take it out completely?
I think you could.
Okay, take the office supplies out completely.
All together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get it to the commissioners.
How about that commissioner?
Okay with that.
Okay. Ready to move on? Over to the area planning commission. We're up 50,000 dollars over last year.
Take out the building inspector.
He wants to add, yeah. He wants to hire the building inspector for about 5,000 dollars less than what he's getting.
He's in, he's talking about having to train them.
So we get an untrained building inspector for 43,000 dollars a year.
Well, if I recall, when you look at other communities our size that have building inspectors, if I'm not mistaken, they were pushing 40. So I don't know that that's too low.
How close is pushing 30, 35, or 38?
Well, on that, inspector. This is for Bill, right?
That's a push, Scott.
Well...
Or a shove.
I don't know. I mean, I'd have to look at the...
I understand.
Book again.
Well, I think it might be a good idea, since this is trying to find someone to replace Bill.
Well, I would, I, listen, I wouldn't mind keeping it in for at least right now.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
My point is make that person a contract to make sure he works out. Well, what if you hire him and he's no good?
Then you fire him.
Because...
This department pushes our revenue.
Do we really need a building inspector?
Well, if you move it smoothly...
Well, he's looking to retire.
We collect taxes quicker. If the projects are held up due to...
How much trouble we got these are?
Well, I don't know.
Most of what was on area planning has got nothing to do with new construction, I guarantee you. It's just setting the area plan to where you can go, how much where you can, how many driveways you need.
I always just think that makes sure that you get someone that might want to keep you in a contract that way.
Put in a pig farm within a quarter mile of your house. You know, that's, that's what area planning does.
You don't know until you put it on.
What if we come back to this one? And just leave it in for now? And, but know that we haven't made any kind of call yet. Come back to it.
I know that in my business, if you contract labor, they furnish everything. You can't furnish them nothing. Vehicles, tools, everything. So I don't know if that would pertain to the same thing here or not.
A building inspector would have no local codes, be well-trained in them.
What?
A building inspector would have no local codes, be trained in them, and you can't use Richmond's codes for Pat County because they're different, or Ruskin's, for that matter. So they do need to have training on what the building codes are for your local county.
I think what, what was meant by training is trying to make a smooth transition should Bill decide to retire, looking at that person as a potential replacement for him. And trying, I mean, to me, I think that's what the push was, is trying to ensure we have a smooth transition.
Would you leave it? Would you, would you leave it?
He didn't give us a date. He didn't give us date, but he, if you remember, he did say that he was looking at doing it sooner rather than later, but he didn't give us a timeframe.
Well, he's had a knee operation, which makes it work, I guarantee you. I know it takes your time to get around.
Let's come back to it.
He had a budget of 47,000 for...
Well, that's for his job.
23.
Was it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He had 10,000 back in 23 for...
That's the attorney.
That's the attorney.
He hasn't had a building inspector in quite a while.
That's, no, he hadn't had any, okay.
2012, that was...
2012, I think he was...
I think he lost that person as part of the layoffs.
Right.
Just want to come back to it, then?
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't think anybody's made the call yet.
I've got a question mark on the 5,000 dollar litigation.
Well, he did say that he expected litigation no matter how the solar issue came out, one, either way. So I think he was trying to plan for that, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we're only talking 400 acres. I've had a lot of calls with people, and I'm telling them, only 400 acres? Forget it.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, I think he was...
We're not gonna do anything unless Rushville gets it, and they're not gonna give it.
Well, all I'm doing is repeating what the man said.
I understand, Scott, but...
You know? He was trying to plan for it either way.
Again, getting back to so many of them, the possibilities, well, come back and see if the possibility becomes realization, but we've never budgeted more than $1,000 for litigation for area planning. If it turns into litigation, which I don't think it's going to...
Okay. Well, you're on it. You're on that committee, so if you think that's not gonna happen, so...
Well, we're paying the attorney as it is, and 15,000 dollars a year, so part of that litigation...
They did, they did spend 8,400 in 2020. I don't know what that's about, but...
That was COVID.
Well, we don't know what it was about in 2020, it was just happened to be the time period, but...
It was a joke.
Yeah. You want to take it back to 1,000, I don't...
I put it on 1,000, and I can come says if he has a problem. I mean, if that happens, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Stick it down to 1,000.
Solar's not gonna fly unless Rushville passes it, and right now, that's, that's a question.
They're not gonna do, they're not gonna do it. Okay, so I'm gonna take 2,000, you guys?
Yep.
Which one is that?
The litigation.
Okay, everything else? $9,000 in software, that's pretty much been the budget for the last several years. He just spent $12,000 in 2022. Any other questions on the area plan? Let's get the assessor. She's wanted extra $200 this year. So it should basically be her field equipment, and what that was for, Jane? I think she covered that, but I'm...
He never usually asked for anything, was he really need to...
I think that looks good. Next one, check it close. She wants 30,000 more than last year.
Are we leaving the assessor alone?
I don't see anything in...
Yeah, they decided to pick on you.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
She cut $2,000 off her assistance, so let's move on from assessor and other questions. The auditor.
The only thing I had requested was raises, which I took all those out for now. Took us back to where we're... For all departments, I took the raises out.
I was thinking about a zero. Auditor looks good to me. Especially the sheriff's department.
Question marks, the second deputy raised it 5,000 dollars. The bookkeeper raised it 5,000 dollars.
Yeah, I had requested raises for everybody, but I've taken those out for now, until you decide countywide what you're doing.
Oh, okay.
We're on page six now.
Is that VDA?
Yep.
I'm saying, he requested an increase for board members per meeting, but I've taken that down for now.
All right. Let's save the sum, okay. Board of Zoning Appeals?
You take it back to 18, Jane?
Yeah.
How about the secretary?
Left it at 5, same as last year.
Ready to move on? Zoning Appeals? Last for 1,500 more.
Page seven.
And Bob, she took it back to the, what it was. She took the raises out for it right now.
Okay.
We'll come back to it.
Okay.
We're on Circuit Court. Page seven.
Porter Bailiff, 39,000, prepared at 27 last year. Deputy Court reporter, 69,000, prepared at 50,000 last year. Those are my two big question marks. 12,000 and 19,000 dollar raises.
Attorney Board, we spent 22,000 dollars on side key vows already.
What county you on?
It was, it was, I was looking at side key vows for Circuit Court.
Well, last year, they didn't spend 5,000 that they had asked for last year.
Does anyone remember why he wants us large increases?
Well, I mean, he's already spent 22,000 in 2024. Well, I mean, he's already spent twenty-two thousand in twenty-twenty-four. And if I recall, they were seeing a trend where.
Well, he said it fluctuates.
Yeah, but it's been steadily climbing since twenty-nineteen. Except for twenty-twenty-three, and then it, now it's ballooned. And I'm okay with taking it down a little bit.
I'm just saying, looking at last year's, what he asked for and what he didn't spend.
Sure.
Five thousand.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you.
So instead of thirty-nine, make it thirty-two?
No, we're on psyche vows for Circuit Court. He's requested fourteen.
Ten be enough, nine? He spent seventeen thousand. He's over budget this year.
If you look at the screen, Bob, he's already spent twenty-two.
Mike, what do you think? My psyche vows?
Well, I think it's a margin.
Page seven. That's on screen. See, psyche vows.
He's asking for fourteen, but he's already spent twenty-two, four, fifty-three.
Yeah, but his prior years are very erratic. And last year, he did not spend five thousand dollars out of that account.
I would, Judge Hubie has been, I think, pretty conservative with his budgets. And I would, I wouldn't really question what he's asking for. He's never, he's never been one to be said, hey, this guy's crazy with what he's asking for. He knows more than we do, as all department heads know, their offices, their areas better than we do. I would just be inclined to leave it.
I would too.
If we have to come back, it's something we can address and talk to Judge Bob. Hey, get in the, in the situations that we're, you know, we're dictating, the sheriff's department, what they have to drive, or now what do they have to do for the CAT system, or, you know. I don't want to get into that stuff.
I'm just, I am working on that stuff over here.
Something I just want to throw out there, that I checked on these postage machines. Instead of everyone buying all their posties individually, we can get a postage machine and you can save like twenty-four percent of your postage if you use a machine versus putting it on. Just an idea, don't get out there.
For everybody to use?
Yeah.
So leave the psychic evaluations alone?
I think we should.
That's something where you, unless you have a postage machine, everybody's office is outside of the thing.
Okay, right now, we already have a postage meter in the clerk's office and we all like, for me, you're gonna see postage in my budget, but it's so I can add money to their postage meter. So whenever Terry does check, she goes upstairs. They've got a spreadsheet that they keep track of which office has how much on the machine. And we use their machine. So we get that discounted postage.
I don't think everybody's doing it though.
I don't, I can't speak for who else doing it, but I know several offices do it.
A couple of my business have rolls of stamps in their drawers.
We have rolls of stamps in our door too, because like, let's say it's a Thursday afternoon and we need to mail something and they're close to the public and Thursday afternoon, we can't access the postage meter. Those rolls of stamps are for like cancer disease, or sometimes if you send something that needs a self-addressed envelope to come back to us, we might stick a stamp on it. So, but most of our mail is gonna be postage meter mail.
What about the pauper attorney contracts?
Last year, they did not spend thirty-six thousand dollars. That they'd asked for.
We had, we had budgeted ninety-five. They were on their way to do.
But he spent thirty-six of what he asked for. Less.
If you had spent ninety-five right now, they had a hundred and twenty budget. No, that's, that's this year's budget, ninety-five. They've spent twenty-two.
They are on pace to spend about thirty-five thousand dollars this year.
There's a big item right there.
They're on pace right now to do about thirty-five thousand dollars this year on pauper attorney contracts. What I did, I, I looked at that twenty-two, one seventy-nine for the twenty, twenty-four expenditures. Divided that out by seven and a half and then multiplied it by twelve, so.
I mean, last year, he didn't spend thirty-six of what he asked for.
So. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, you at least take it back to ninety-five, which is what we budgeted last year.
I think you're right, Scott.
And that ninety-five, that he asked for, he spent thirty-six less than that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay.
I understand. But if you wanna, I mean, and if you want to take it farther, I'm okay with that. I just thought.
No, I was just saying, make sure you understand what I mean.
Yeah, no, I got you.
He's not spending what was budgeted last year.
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, like Mike said, the judge hasn't been. You know, he's always.
He's been pretty tried to be conservative and so, I mean, I don't want to decimate the budget. So put it at ninety-five thousand?
Yeah. That takes us back to, you know, that cuts twenty-five thousand right there. I mean, I, I looked at the, the pet jury too. You know, that's. They really haven't spent that much money over the years with that one either.
Are you talking about account three of five hundred?
Three oh four eighty.
Three oh four eighty.
Oh, sorry.
I'd at least move it back to ten and you could probably do more. What's that on?
The pet jury? Three oh four eight oh. Down toward the bottom, pet jury, yeah.
We're going to how much on that one?
I'd at least take it down to ten, but you guys tell me what you think.
On the petty jury?
Pet jury.
Last year, he asked for fifteen hundred and only, didn't spend eight hundred.
Oh, yeah. No, I understand. That's why I'm saying, you at least take it down to ten. But you could probably take it down more than that. I wouldn't.
I think you can take it way down.
Yeah, I wouldn't budge. I mean, I wouldn't.
The goal should be that we, make it so we're not having these additional appropriations and we cut and slash so much that they have to come back, go, so they always come back and ask for additional population. It's kind of tiring.
Right.
No, I understand.
But if you look at last year's, what everyone asked for.
I'm just saying in general.
And then what wasn't used?
Sure.
And what they did ask for, it was over two point two million dollars that was asked for that wasn't used.
I'm okay with taking it further down than ten, but you guys tell me.
You know, we're going through this amount of money. It doesn't make more sense to talk about the public safety money. How people start allocating that, because I think that's kind of planned in the budget as well too. You're gonna have to set up a, a spot in county general from nine one one to help fund that. Where that money can go to. So I think that should be a little priority better than going through this stuff, because this is, is an aftereffect of what we decide for the voluntary fire departments and the other first responder departments. And my, my priority would be voluntary department, nine one one, sheriff, jail, EMS. And we gotta talk to officials about digging our heels out of EMS. And it'll loosen up and renegotiate, drag chat the table, whatever we gotta do. Kick it and scream it, but we need to do some lead dairials and be a little firmer, a little bit. We're kind of, we've been a pushover for too many years.
I agree.
Well, you know, listen, I'm with you on, on really about everything you just said. It's just, you know, we, we've got some positions that are close to where they need to be. And then we have other positions that aren't.
You talking about in the public safety tax area?
Well, yeah, that's part of it, yeah. But we're, to me, we're not gonna know really about how far we can go. And it's beyond just the public safety folks. I mean, there's a lot of folks that are off a little bit. You know? Um, and that, that we gotta try to help. And to me, I think we need to, um, cut where we can, some of, some of, some line items that look a little heavy. Do that first and then deal with the employment issues, because that way we'll have a better idea about how much we've got to work with.
The, you, I don't think there's anybody here on council. It was on jail, maybe Kate was, and we, we, things that were funded from county general in the past to pay for, anything that covered jail expenses. We moved stuff to sheriff's department over there because it was technically covered. If you get this established, you're gonna know what you have, because we're gonna have to move money around from county general to here and public safety tax dollars will fill that void. And to me, it makes it a whole lot clearer that that piece of the puzzle taken care of, now you got, you know what you got to deal with. Otherwise, I'm just wasting my time here, just going through this stuff. And we're gonna go back, we're gonna go back to public safety taxes and say, oh, hey, we gotta cut this, are we gonna move this here? It's a waste of time. I'm just being honest with you. If you guys want to sit there and go through all this stuff, I may have a pass, but we're, I just feel it's, um, busy work. We're looking busy going, like we're doing some of the budget here, when we're really not addressing the, the main issue, which is first, let's get the public safety tax addressed, how we want to deal with that. And we'll move on from there.
Okay, Gary.
It's up to you guys.
Let me ask you that.
Well, we got about ten offices wanting a hundred percent of it, Mike.
Well, we know what offices.
Honestly, we only had one guaranteed a hundred percent. Most of them want ninety percent, one said a hundred percent.
It doesn't matter what offices want what, because the public safety tax is only for nine one one, voluntary fire department, sheriff's department, jail, and EMS. That's the only ones the statute covers. It'll cover anybody else. So once you get that sorted out, then you can see what you got to distribute through for the other people that want money.
Well, my biggest thing is nine one one stands alone. Whatever you cut in the counties, it don't matter. We aren't county generals, so we can cut all the county offices.
You don't understand, we have to set up a fund for you to feed, to feed you.
I mean, and that would be something different, but as far as the, before that, we are stand alone. So you can cut all day long in your county offices. It's not gonna have any bearing on me. We have two funds.
Right, that's why you're saying, that's why you're saying we should address the public safety tax first.
Am I correct, Jane? That we will have to set up a county general fund, an account for nine one one to put those public safety tax dollars into?
No, we could pay nine one one directly for public safety tax.
So what would you put an account in, just one of their state and local, or what?
Well, a public safety tax line.
I mean, they would, they would just be paid, just like how we pay stuff out of jaillet, they would just be paid directly from the fund.
So that's.
Or whatever portion of their salaries we wanted to pay from the fund would come.
So that's my take on it. I mean, if you guys want to do that, just fine. I'll keep working on my stuff here, working on the budget and it's already gonna be, and you guys spend your time.
We gotta take one thing at a time. We don't know where we're sitting on that till we get down to the nitty gritty on this.
I'm here no matter what you want to talk about, so what's, whatever you guys want to do.
You're wanting to divide up the safety tax, we don't even get how much we're gonna have to work with.
We know ballpark. We didn't know jaillet either.
Yeah, about a hundred thousand dollars maybe.
Bob, we did this to the jaillet. We knew, we knew ballpark, we did. We were starting to figure it out. We figured, okay, if we're gonna get four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we're only gonna shoot for maybe four hundred thousand dollars. So we will not exceed that. It's not hard.
Yeah, we did it before on the jaillet. Was it five hundred and what thousand, Jane? Public safety.
Actually came slightly less than five, but that's a guess. Like four ninety.
Four ninety, so we were guessing. So we could decide right now how we're gonna divide up the four ninety.
This figure's four thirty. Be conservative until she gets, because you're supposed to, you didn't get that information yet, right?
No, because when they released those estimates on Friday, it did not include the public safety tax for us, which I think is because we had just passed it in July. So I don't think it was included in those estimates.
Do you think you'll get something at some point?
Well, in November, they certified the actual numbers.
Okay, it'll be too late for them, but.
Right.
So we just got the ballpark here.
Right.
I mean, what's your recommendation? Stick it, get four ninety or go less than that? For budget purposes?
You're only collecting it for five months.
Four fifty?
Likely less.
Four fifty, four sixty?
I mean, I would think you would be safe with four fifty. I mean, I think the five hundred would be safe, but if I had to say that and I'm reckoning, I don't want y'all to come back with pitchforks.
Well, you'll know those soon, right? Pretty soon.
Scott, you have to make that in one point, about two or three hundred thousand in the first one? No, no.
Of course, you're only collecting it for five months.
Well, but keep in mind, this, this budget is for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we'll be collecting it all that time. And so. The money will be there for that kind of thing. Let's talk about whatever you guys want to talk about. I don't care.
Well, Bob, Bob is running the show, so I don't want to step on his toes and, you know, it's just my suggestion. I would rather know what I have than go through all this and get it done and then go back and rework it again, because we moved on. Because when we did the jaillet, we had, we took money from county general and traded, swapped, or created different things so that the jaillet would cover it. So that freed up money for county general, which could go turn to raises to the departments.
I kind of thought it'd be something that we could get here that we can plug in the gaps as we might need them, as we set the budget. If we come up short on the budget.
No.
That's not too bad.
So you won't divide up the tax and then we go back. So you won't divide up the tax and then we go back to the budget at a later time?
Well, it's going to take, I hope it's taking much effort. They would say, okay, how much do you want to give the volunteer fire departments on top? You know, 5, 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, and what do we want to do?
And do you want to throw in the fire departments for that, too? The volunteers?
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll get something where they can't autoreign.
They're busting their humps, they're raising money, it's a fundraiser, they got trucks and stuff to do. They're being, they're looking at big OSHA compliance issue where they have to get two sets of turnout gear for each firefighter that the city has. They can't afford that, $5,000 a guy. And the other problem is, I can only speak for Emerson, but they did all their gear at one time. So you've got like 31, 32 firefighters. Some of them are batches of 10 to 15 at 9,000 a firefighter for at least set of gear. Oh, and by the way, if you get a drop of blood on it, you technically have to eliminate, you have to replace that gear or diesel fuel. Then you got your breathing apparatus, it's got to be, every 10 years, it's got to be changed, how much, every 10 years, boots every 10 years. Regardless if they're good or bad, it's a date, it's a hit there, it's got to be taken out of service. There's a lot of costs associated with these volunteer departments.
I'm not saying there's not, I'm asking if that's going to be included with all this other because we had already passed it, if this, we'd give 5% toward them, if the city would also do the same, which they refused to do.
Well, they're in negotiations now.
They're, this is, they're not going to do anything. We know that.
So do we stay with the 5% divided up?
In turn, I think 5% is not much, we take in 5% out of, what were we going to say, 450, that's
20, 25,000 dollars each, or 20, 25,000 dollars. Each one of them gets about 7500, $10,000, that's a lot of pancakes.
When you started pursuing your talk about some of the departments?
Yeah.
I'd rather do it at 5,000.
Because if it goes up, it's, it will get better, that's it. Is that all? All over, Bob, the hot seat.
I'll be happy to move this over because I'm on the hot seat and letting you take over.
Kelly, you have six people including yourself, right?
Yeah, five and all six.
Zach, you have 50 people?
Yeah. Kelly's got part-time also.
I'm at full-time right now.
Sharon, we were going to the budget, you know, out of, sheet by sheet, line by line, and I just said, you know, in my opinion, I felt that would be more beneficial if we figured out the public safety taxes, how we're going to divide that up. So let's see what we have left for county general and then allocate things as needed.
Okay. I apologize for being late, I was thinking six, so.
You're okay.
My fault.
You're allowed one mistake a year.
Pardon me?
You are allowed one mistake a year.
Well, I'm dead past that.
Yeah, I know what you mean, sure, that's something to do the first day you're here to make 10 or 15. So we, Jane said we did about 490,000 dollars, we pull up the public safety tax. Is that just the year or is that including October, November, December?
That's what I'm estimating we would get next year based on what we're currently getting for a different tax, it's at the same rate. And then doing the division of the D743 from the city.
So that does not include the kickstart from October, November, December?
It won't.
Okay, so that's just going to be kind of padding the that's kind of a a bonus. So if we were wrong, then we should, we should still be fine. At 450, and we were, so we were discussing about, do we want to do a percentage? Kay said a flat number or percentage, I like to keep it at a percentage so that that number will always stay with whatever we receive. So if it goes to 460, they get 10%, if it goes to 470, they get 10% of that, but I'm just saying we're going to base it off of this number, give you a flat rate and say 20,000 for each department.
No, no, stay with the percentage.
Are you talking about just the fire department or all the breathing entities?
Just the fire department.
He's just talking about the fire department, oh my.
We can't do it because 911's got to get, we've got to get that fixed.
Have to.
This is our opportunity to fix it.
What do we need to do to fix it?
You got to get those people paid right, I mean, I don't know, I mean.
Here's some rough numbers.
I've gone on runs where you got, and no offense to dispatch, because see if they do the best damn job they can. But then I'm sending me, sending me a mile away to a wrong address. Fortunately, it was a deceased individual. But if that had been a house fire, had been a wreck or something, get inverted car, that's a big difference and that's not a lack of training on that's the quality of people that she has to work with, it's just turnover, turnover, turnover. You've got to get those people paid right.
You can't demand the training if they don't get paid right.
Well, here's some just rough numbers to start out with. If we did the sheriff's department with the 50 people, it's 7,000, and then Kelly's six people, it's 6,000, that would leave $34,000 each for a fire department.
We got EMS.
Well, the EMS contract is out of line completely because they have way more people on there than it says the contract is supposed to be.
But until that gets addressed, we still have to deal with it, we have to deal back in.
I say we just keep paying what we've been paying because they've added more people.
I got a better, different plan for that.
You got what?
I've got a plan for that.
Give us your plan, Mike.
Take some percentage of runs.
Do what?
Take some percentage of runs, the city makes, gets the most benefit from EMS.
Yeah.
EMS makes maybe a third of the calls.
Yeah.
Look, she's in jail, but you know it.
I'm not disagreeing with your numbers, I'm pretty sure with how you're figuring.
I agree, too.
The city taxpayer is already paying double. For what? They pay, they give you, they pay the county X amount of dollars in tax.
For EMS?
For tax. And generally, she gives the city X amount of dollars. The city turns around and pays the ambulance.
We can say the same thing on both sides, both sides can say that.
Nothing, there was no negotiation between the city and the county on raises, on
And if I recall, the last time that happened, there was a lawyer sitting over here and it never came back to the city.
I have no idea who, it's the commissioners.
No, that came to a council meeting, council can't do anything about it, but it's That's who requested it and that's where it came to.
We also didn't get a budget from the EMS that was supposed to be July first. It's in the contract.
And I can't help you with that.
So you've got to separate yourself from the commissioner and the EMS role. Because we can't.
How many act fair called you and complained about the ambulance?
Well, they complained about what?
Yeah, nobody complains. They're happy with their service. And you guys want to say here?
I've heard them complain about EMS.
Yeah.
Nobody's wanting to, nobody's wanting to change EMS.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, Kelly, you were there when that call come in, said they wanted a different EMS driver?
Each year EMS goes up every single year. And it's, it's a huge I don't know what the answer is, but the part of it, the contract needs to be negotiated and the commissioners, they dig in their heels, if we say we give 500,000 dollars, we can't back, come back and give another 100,000 dollars.
What happens to the revenues that the EMS collects? I know they collect it all.
They'll make money out of it, that's for sure. I didn't hear you.
I say, what happens to the money that the EMS collects?
That buys the ambulances and all the equipment, they get 10% off of the, off of the insurance money comes back in.
You only get 10% of it? Where's the rest of it?
That goes, the rest of it goes to pay the operating expenses.
The 10% was a fund that was set up in the very beginning to cover maintenance and new vehicles and other such things, correct?
That was set up when we took over from Fayette Regional.
Right. And it's not a money-making deal.
Well, I know it's not money-making, but there is money coming in.
Money coming in, but
but you also got to realize the ambulance has went from, say, 180,000 to almost 400,000 now.
Why, but your fees have also increased.
Not that I know of.
Haven't increased at all?
Not in the last six or eight years, anyway.
It still costs $10,000 to take a kid to Indianapolis with a broken wrist?
Yeah.
That's why we drove him.
Well, I don't think EMS is going to
Well, but the whole point of that is if it was $10,000, they only got $1,000 of that money. So that's not even, that's like, that's not even a comparison as to what their, the money that's coming into their revenue.
Well, the bad news is you didn't have anybody in Carnfield sign on wrist.
EMS is not going to turn to screw people over on fees and services, they got to charge, they got to charge. And if they're you got how many advanced life units? One, two?
Three.
You got three? And that's, you got to have, how many people, an EMT?
Pardon me?
If they have an EMT for each one, right, is that, what constitutes the advanced life?
There's an EMT on each truck, there's a paramedic on two, and an advanced EMT on one.
Okay. Most, most of the So, I'm not trying to screw EMS over. I'm trying to figure out a way to spare the county. Because it hasn't been a fair game because the agency has never been led to negotiate with us.
No, thank you.
That's way before your time. And somehow we got to get people to come on cable and say, you know, I mean, you're in the volunteer department, fire department, when the city says, hey, we're not going to and you're, you're you're mutually with the city or something. I mean, you got to have these division lines here. But that, that's my fault for EMS.
We house all, we house all the city people in the jail, I mean, you can go back and forth all day long and say, double tax, double tax, it goes on both sides. Both sides. But we always get the short end of the stick, the county does.
But I don't think you're getting the short end.
Yeah, we are.
We're getting the short end from the sheriff either.
Huh?
They're not getting the short end from the sheriff either, these people all pay taxes, city and county taxes.
Yeah, and then they're, and they're not paid enough.
Well, I agree he's not paid enough. You want to look at that way? I'm not paid enough, but we're not here fighting that one, we're here arguing about who should be paying more.
That's the problem, is we can't get, we can't, we're not a part of the argument for you because we're not talked to. We're not discussed, we're not part of that discussion for you.
But on the other hand, why don't this council get up and go to a city council meeting and sit down and say, we're here to talk? And then go from there, at least as a starting point.
Good thought.
I mean, I've never seen a county council one sit at a city council meeting. I've been in a bunch of them.
I've been there.
I've watched him, I don't have the authority to do that, that's a commissioner thing.
Well, I don't see the point, I don't see the point of going to talk to them in a meeting. What's the point of going to talk to them in a meeting when they've said they're not going to negotiate, when the mayor said he's not going to negotiate?
Well, you go around him. He worked for a council. Yeah, well, they control the money. Not necessarily.
Can we get back on the budget?
I thought that'd be a good idea, Jim.
This could be brought up to a meeting. You guys are underpaid, I won't argue that.
And so is 911.
Sure they are. Sure they are.
911's underpaid?
It's worse, it hurts, it hurts the worst.
Everybody's underpaid.
Except me. Move right along, Sharon.
You're a public servant, you're underpaid.
There you go, Ron.
If you defend this country, you're well underpaid.
Absolutely.
But it's a matter of service and sacrifice.
Absolutely.
Let's move on.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Quit bitching about your monies that you're not getting.
Ron.
Jeez, this is not open to that point. What point are we making?
This isn't a we discussion, this is a council discussion.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, you let us handle the budget, you handle your particular office.
I am.
You're not.
Really?
You're out of line.
I'm just saying, everybody here is underpaid, all we're doing is talking above, we're not even talking about the budget anymore. It's about somebody's agendas. And we've gotten so far off track here that we've wasted an hour doing it.
Amen.
Your own councilmen are saying the same thing, I'm not leading, I'm not leading this meeting. Obviously, we're wasting our money, have you done a budget, Ron?
Sharon, can we get back on?
Yes, it's time to get back on. Yeah, right before you walked in, I'm, we were talking about dividing up the public safety tax. And I just threw out some numbers there, for example, okay, are we on that or are we on?
Let's go through the budget first, that's where we always go before, then we'll go to the public safety tax. That's my vote.
Because we're not going to get through this.
Right.
I mean, let's, let's stay on track and then we'll discuss all that. I, I came in late, I apologize, I'm not trying to cut anybody off.
That's fine.
But
You're in order.
Page seven, Sharon.
I'm on page seven, I seen that. So have you done anything with circuit court?
Yeah, we've reduced the popper attorney contracts to $95,000. That's 30490.
We decided to keep psych, or did we take psych eval down to 10?
Which one was that, Scott?
Psych eval.
I don't have it down.
Psych, 14? We haven't decided yet, that's all we're talking about.
Already they've spent, expended 17.
They spent 22,000, actually, or, hang on a minute, take that back. Yeah, 22,000. But if you look at what they've done in the past years, not even, I mean, the question is, is this an anomaly or is it, you know, heading a trend that direction? It's been kind of up and down.
Well, last year they didn't spend 5,000.
Didn't even spend a thousand.
Well, it is going to a trend, I can tell you that because I deal in the mental health and it is going up, I can guarantee you that.
Well, I had talked about maybe moving it, either keeping it the same or moving it to 10, and that, you know, it doesn't.
Let's move it to 10.
Move it to 10.
We passed over the chief court reporter and the deputy chief, I'll leave it at that.
No, no. Remember for all the employees, Jane took it down back to where it was for right now.
So that's not even on there anymore?
Well, it's on there, but just not.
Just ignore the salary section.
Just ignore the salary part of it for now. And we were talking about pet jury, too. If you look, it's been requested for 12,900.
We moved it back to 10.
Did we, and we moved that one back to 10.
That's why I got it rolled down.
Yeah. Pet jury.
Yes.
Move that back down to 10 from 12,900.
That needs to go down more.
I'm okay with taking it down more if you guys want to, just tell me how much.
Take down 6,500.
I'm okay with that.
Did you already do the popper attorney contracts?
Yeah, we took that down to 95.
95,000, yeah.
95,000.
Yeah.
95,000 would be great, wouldn't it?
I think you're way with that, Scott.
I think so.
Okay, are we good on that circuit court for right now?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. We didn't finish that one. Do what? We're not finished, we're still on the circuit court. I just asked and they said we were done. We had them, we went down, all the way down.
Okay, do you want?
What do you want, that's all the same.
Yep, everything's still the same. Well, on bills and lodgings, they spent nothing last year, 2024. The money's there, I'd just leave it. I would take it out. They didn't spend anything last year.
I wouldn't take it down completely, but
No, I wouldn't take it down, look at the history.
Yeah, no, I understand. But if, if they need it, then they'll, you know.
Thousand?
We can't, we can't, yeah, I'm okay with a thousand, but
Take it out completely.
Yeah, I don't think we should take it out completely.
I would take it down to 100. To a what? 100?
100.
Where are you going to go for $100?
$100 is not going to pay, how many times on a jury? 12? Plus that, that wouldn't pay for 12 people, one meal.
We'll set up tents outside the courthouse. Set some tents outside.
Okay, we'll do, take it down to 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah, $1,000, yeah.
Do it, yeah, lodging bills. Pardon me?
Are we done? With circuit?
Are you done? Are you going to be transcripts that we're set? Yes.
He's got that stair lift in his budget, but if you remember when he was here, he said it really should be in courthouse operating.
Yeah.
Or one or the other. You want me to take it out of here?
I would.
Where's that at?
The very last line.
The building construction.
40600.
Yeah, $25,000.
Yeah, it needs to be somewhere else.
Don't leave that in there.
And that's gonna come out of what fund?
Courthouse. It'd be up to, yeah.
Commissioners.
Courthouse operating or... Courthouse, jail, one of them.
Appreciate him bringing it up as an issue, but it needs to be somewhere else.
What about the emergency notification, $4,000? And that's, uh, 30771.
What is that, Ray?
It's for, uh, e-dispatches. It's what all of our volunteer fire departments choose to get secondary dispatch, and then if we have to push out emergency messages to our first responders, it's done through that app. It's a subscription-based app.
Is the $4,000 an estimate?
No, the price is roughly around $3,900. The $4,000 is just to give me a little room to play with, then to determine what the charge is when they rebuild it.
So, it's communication?
It is. Emergency communications.
$30200 contractual services, $4,000.
Where are you at?
Bad is 30200.
Okay.
Missing a note about the contractual services.
Do you want my explanation on what it is? It is to pay for mutual aid agreements with other counties, uh, and drafting the legis... Or the legal documents that we need in order for us to accept help from other surrounding counties, roots management, fire, law enforcement, as well as for us to provide mutual aid to them. If we leave it up to them to draw up the contracts and us sign them, we're at whatever mercy they want it to be. So, we need to be... Something that should've been done years and years ago, have these already made, and then just update them year to year. But it's... It's gonna take a lawyer to write these documents.
Thank you for the explanation, Ray. Is that an estimate, then?
No, that's just a ballpark figure.
Which is what an estimate is.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, it is. But it's based off a conversation, not off of a written estimate.
Gotcha. And you got a radio tower for $2,000.
Yeah, that's the maintenance on it. It's very expensive to have someone climb the radio tower and fix the antennas, uh, which we're having done right now because, uh, multiple departments' antennas are loose and leaning, which affects our radio transmissions. And it's in the process of being fixed now. But that's something that we regularly need somebody to climb up there, do that work.
Well, you haven't anybody do it for the last five years.
Well, yeah, that's the problem. That's why they're leaning and broke over. Plus, I wasn't here three and a half years ago.
No, no, I... I know you weren't. Believe it, we know you weren't.
Um... Personally, I understand the need for the county planning. Um, and... And that's probably a pretty good number for county planning, because we're two years overdue for it. And that could be helpful in terms of... Grant receipt and that kinda thing. But when it comes down to some of this other stuff, I think it needs to kinda go by the wayside. Um... I think you mentioned computers for four stations at 3,500. I think we can get rid of that. You mentioned field equipment that has been needed once in the last two years. At $2,000, I think we can get rid of that. When it comes to contractual services, I think we can find similar county agreements to use as guidelines. I don't know... I don't necessarily think we have to have an attorney for that. Run it by the county attorney, that's what we're paying for. Um... So, some of that stuff, I think, can go by the wayside. But I... I would go along with the county plan.
So, the ADA is a requirement plan that we have to have as a county plan. It needs to be...
What is that?
The ADA, the Adult with Disabilities Act Plan.
You're talking about... You're talking about the county plan, what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, right.
Yeah.
So, we have to have that as legislated, uh, as the ADA coordinator.
You said keep that, right?
Yeah, I'm... I'm thinking it'd be okay to keep that, because you need to update that about every five years, and I think we're at seven. So...
I will tell you the reason there's film equipment in there is because my volunteers need equipment to be out working. Uh, but if you cut that, uh... And I didn't have that in my budget last year for that. Uh, if you cut it, it just means they're out there unprotected, so, uh, that's completely up to the council if they want it protected or not. It's true.
Is anybody agreeing with anything? What do I need to do here?
So, only the one thing you changed was the $25,000, Jane?
That's the only thing I've changed so far, is the 20... Yeah, I took the 25 out for the stair lift.
And we're keeping the county planning for five.
Okay.
I think we discussed it, but how's that work with area planning?
So, area planning's separate.
But you're both planning for the county, how to lay out the land, well, how to zone it, but you don't talk to each other?
Well, no, never know. So, this is a little different. But it... Generally speaking, in... In grant processes, they want you to have an overall comprehensive plan as part of your, uh, process. And so, there's part of... Part of his... His area that requires some county planning, and it requires a comprehensive, uh, plan. And the last one we did was seven years ago. Those really do need to be updated every five years or so.
Do they have anything to do with zoning?
No.
It's the area planning's job, do that comprehensive plan.
Well, yeah, but that's a... It's different for his area. So...
Explain the emergency notifications.
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
So, that's e-dispatches, I just explained that. It's what our volunteer fire EMS, uh, and if we get the rapid notification, I'll go through a grant. It's what our law enforcement will use for their CAD services and to get emergency notifications as a secondary dispatch. So, you guys hear my phone go off occasionally in here during meetings, that's e-dispatches alerting me that there was a call somewhere. Uh, what this does is when firefighters or response personnel are going to their vehicles and they're not... They don't have their radios on them, it allows them to hear that dispatch a second time without our central dispatch having to meditate with that.
Is that what we budget 911 for doing, for setting up a communication system with the emergency management and the fire departments a year ago?
No, I... I have no idea what you're at.
We do have a mass notification program.
Yeah.
And it is split between the city and county, it's civic, and it's off the public messages and the message and the dispatches that go to the individual, um, agencies.
Right.
And that works pretty well.
Actually, if it gets bigger, we need more people.
We took out the wages and group health insurance, that's something we had to worry about. $15,000.
Can you get that, Jane?
Jane?
No.
10-230, group health insurance.
We left in the radio tower service, right? The $2,000 for someone to maintain the tower.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Contractual services is also a question. I said you had to have that with the communications.
Like, if you guys are doing... If you do this, but like you did the animal shelter, if you're looking like the $1,000 for... For repair and maintenance, there's never been more than $400 spent. I mean, there's other lines. What do you want to do?
Yeah, I mean, I see, you know, uh, 1, 2, 3... There are three lines for supplies that we could probably merge into one. Office supplies, training supplies, other supplies.
So, if I'm not mistaken, on training supplies and then office supplies, they have to be in separate line items. Um, I can't pay for training supplies that I would use in training, uh, with an office supply line.
Yes, correct. I already took out office supplies, though, because any county general department can use the commissioner's budget, item for either of the supplies.
Thank you for letting us know.
So, now it came out of commissioner?
I'm fine with that, I just nobody ever told me, or I think...
So, the commissioners pays the office supplies for all county general?
I didn't... Nobody ever told me, so...
Okay, remember that wage, trying to bring this department up to date.
So...
Has to be a little bit of time, though. Can't do it all at once.
No, okay.
So, what would the other supplies be? Because over here in 2023, it was 49... $4,990.
I'm thinking of things like absorbent for oil spills, any hazardous materials, uh, dyeing stands, things like that.
Services by $100, there's 10 more, 47, 44.
Also, one of the things that I'm supposed to be carrying on my vehicle is a supply of foam if it's needed for hazmat, kimball spills, uh, something the fire departments run out usually there, so that they can quickly grab mine and continue their... So, that would be another supply. What else could it be? I'm really not trying to gouge the county for stuff, I'm just trying to get the basic necessities while we're in here.
Well, nobody's gouging the county, we're just gouging the taxpayer.
Well, not necessarily.
Put it down.
I think the taxpayers...
The county, you know, we're just trying to set the budget based on what the taxpayer can pay.
Yeah, sure. I think they expect a certain amount of response whenever they have an emergency. So, I think they understand some of this public safety stuff.
So, the miscellaneous and other service, that's 750. What would be the miscellaneous? Because that was 28, 28, June 23. What was that, Ray? The miscellaneous?
Oh, that's just... Because things come up throughout the year. I can't really take funds out of another account just to pay for...
No, it was 28, 28, 23, I'm curious, what's that before?
28, 23.
$2,828.
I don't quite remember, but I have to look at my budget documents tonight. There's for specific things, though.
So, we've cut it, actually, but not have an assistant director and then take it out of bill, that's 55,000 right there. Then 5,000, 60...
Still 55,000, more was virtual last year.
60.
I'm sorry, I was looking up what he spent last year. Looks like it was US Bank? I'm not sure what that was, Amazon, it was on the US Bank card, I'm sorry. Some Amazon, purposes, a Davis towing and recovery, or something, sure, with graphics? Or something? It was just... It was just random.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, at 77, 150 is where I added. Okay. Is there a ready or pay on that? What was the truck and motor vehicles? I don't remember what that was, wait.
Truck and motor.
The $5,000? $5,000?
Oh, I see it.
Well, truck and motor vehicles, that was for, um... Just in case something, like my transmission goes out.
Well, you... You put it... That's... That's an asset line, not a repair line.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
So, normally, that 4043, I would be if you're gonna purchase, like, a new truck or something.
So, that will come off.
I'm not saying I agree.
Okay. That's actually 82, 150.
Okay, 72.
Why'd you have 77?
I must've taken it out, something that you didn't...
Oh, can we take out the computers, please?
Take out what? I'm sorry?
The computers.
I did.
Okay, you did, okay.
Would you take out computer what?
Computers, 3,500.
4,000.
It's for the floor workstations.
And equipment's also been taken out.
Equipment's taken, alright.
So, if the council will permit, the floor workstation computers is for the emergency operations center, uh, so, uh, let's say...
Well, not necessarily.
Put it down.
I think the taxpayers...
The county, you know, we're just trying to set the budget based on what the taxpayer can pay.
Yeah, sure. I think they expect a certain amount of response whenever they have an emergency. So I think they understand substance, public safety.
So the miscellaneous and other service, that's 750. What would be the miscellaneous? Because that was 2828, June 23. What was that, wait? The miscellaneous?
Oh, that's just, because things come up throughout the year. I can't really take funds out of another account just to pay for...
No, it was 282823, I'm curious, what's that before? $2,828.
I don't quite remember, I have to look at my budget documents tonight. There's for specific things.
So we've cut it actually. But not have an assistant director and then taking out, that's 55,000 right there. Then 5,000. Sixty. Sixty. What do you have here?
I'm sorry, I was looking up what he spent last year. Looks like it was US Bank. I'm not sure what that was, Amazon, it was on the US Bank card, I'm sorry. Some Amazon purchases, a Davis towing and recovery for some Centurion graphics or something. It was just random. Okay, so I'm sorry, at 77,150 is where I added. Okay. Is everybody... What was the truck and motor vehicles? I don't remember what that was, wait.
Truck.
The $5,000.
Oh, I see it.
Well, truck and motor vehicles, that was for, um, just in case something like my transmission goes out.
Well, you put it, that's an asset line, not a repair line.
Oh, okay. I don't know.
So normally that 4043, I would be if you're going to purchase like a new truck or something.
So that will come off. That's actually 82,150.
Set, okay, 72.
Why'd you have 77?
I must have taken out something that you didn't, don't yet.
Can we take out the computers, please?
Take out what, I'm sorry?
The computers.
I did.
Okay, you did, okay.
Would you take out computer what?
Yeah.
Computers, 3,500.
Four zeros.
This for the four workstations.
And equipment's also been taken out.
Equipment's taken, alright.
So if the council will permit, the four workstation computers is for the emergency operations center. So let's say dispatch can't use their building because there's something going on in fire. Their people are going to have to have a place to go and work. Now, granted, Kelly can work from home on her laptop and using her radios, but we also have to have an emergency operations center that functions as partners with the state's emergency operations center. And I need to get four emergency support functions, positions filled with trained people to be able to be those liaisons as a part of the emergency management and the emergency management compact with FEMA. So that's what those four workstations are for.
And I understand that.
Yep.
But, um, and I hope we can get there, I just don't think yet.
And I'm not above applying for grants and stuff like this either, so.
You what?
I'm not above applying for grants for things like this. And I'm working diligently as I can as a one-person show.
Well, and we appreciate that, but...
You can move money within your own department, too.
So where are you at now, Jane?
Seventy-two, 150. Seventy-two, 150.
Where we at, folks?
Okay, we are... clerk, yeah.
And you've taken out all the salaries, correct?
I took all the salaries back to this year's level.
Okay. We'll work on that. So we have is postage, travel mileage, meeting expense, and lodging fees. And they're all in line, but from last year, well, I'd say...
Is there a person that's doing the records on the, on their account? That page?
Records, my part-time? She's on both, she's on this page plus on the left two. She comes out of my perpetual perpetuation and election fund. But I didn't think we were talking about salaries.
So she's paid out of perpetuation and?
Election.
Election and she does what?
Election, perpetuation.
And preservation of records. How caught up are you on your preservation?
Not even caught up.
What year are you in?
I'm off to my death.
Are you having the same issues that Mrs. Hadman referred with the deterioration of records?
Not too bad. But we've been working with the historical society about stealing stuff for free. They did a few files for us, very good to things like that. But ours, our worst stuff's in the bottom of the basement of the jail. Our records are horrible down there because it was just pieces just dumped on top of it multiple times.
That's not the same place?
No, it's not. Josh and Austin did their jobs there, but it's still not there.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, shouldn't wait. Because it's a $4,190 difference in what she's wanting to raise for her part-time.
Where we at here, folks?
I'm on perpetuation, page 31 declares perpetuation. Sorry, I was moving on. Dale, you feel comfortable with that? Dale? You feel comfortable with where the records are being stored at?
No, they're getting moved. We just haven't had time to move them.
Hey, we have a plan in place to relocate all those records. I think you remember that. The biggest holdup in the matter has been the lack of manpower to get dirty work done. But we have come a long way on that.
For the raise for the part-time employee is $4,192 is what you're wanting to raise it. Is that going to come out of your perpetuation?
Half of it is, so 10,000 would come from perpetuation total. Right now, I think 6,500 or 6,800 comes out of there. And the other would come from the election portion of it, where it comes from now. So I think 2,000 for each one basically to get that balance back.
Okay, so it's coming out of your funding?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Well, they know that, because overall salaries. Part-time, $10,000, that's not high.
They're paying that.
They're paying.
Yeah, that's coming out of her perpetuation.
So they can mark that off?
I'm sorry. It was... So the part-time, um, half is coming out of her, uh, did you say the tax?
Don't worry about it.
Dawn?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Did you say that the half of hers is coming out of perpetuation and half is coming out of your, what comes in off of the tax, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. That's on the part-time employee.
So we need perpetuation.
The perpetuation, yeah?
No. No, there is. Better extension.
Where are you at, Scott?
Do you want to go to cooperative extension next?
What page?
Are we done with clerk?
Are we done with clerk, or do we have another one?
Um, she has election board.
Election board, too. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's why I keep looking that one up.
What page is that on?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Thirty-six thousand dollars. Less than last year.
There's no election in 25. There could always be a special election or something could come up. Should we do it once a month?
Wait, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, this could be a special election, something could come up to where we would have to have a special election. And then my election board meeting would meet once a month. We've had a lot more this year because of going to vote centers.
So you meet once a month?
Once a month, and then right before the election, we probably at least a couple of times a week right before. And of course, they are there for the day before run trainings and stuff like that. Very fortunate that they're willing to do that.
Originally, we had taken off the 2,500 at the bottom, did you have that?
Yeah.
Yeah. What'd you say, Sarah?
At our last meeting, we'd already taken off the 2,500, the stipend at the 10 to 24, last one.
You're saying take that off?
Yes. That's what they had said at the last meeting.
Right, because it's not an election year, the stipend's only statute of the state's for the election years.
Right.
Since there's no election next year.
Right.
And she's not asking for anything in the meals and snacks or anything like that?
Just the increase from the board members.
Yeah. Are you leaving that?
I guess I had taken it out along with all the other raises, did you want me to add it back?
Yeah, no, I think you should take it out for now.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight hundred dollars. Well, move it to, uh, back to where it was last year.
Sixty-six.
Yeah.
The clerical on the election board, is that the same one that's on your, that was on your other parts? Yeah, perpetuation.
Yes, that's my part-time person, yeah, that's my part-time person.
So that one would be taken out as far as what we're going to do, right?
She pays her other, both places, so yeah, I just took it back to the 24 level.
Yeah.
The 65, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this for Dawn? You want to go back to page 10 now?
Yeah.
We're going to do commissioners later, because it's going to take longer. So the extension? Page 12.
Nothing jumps out there to take this out?
I have, that we had already cut it, $4,359 is what you have.
I got it, we took it from 94 down to 91,9.
Yeah, 4,300, yeah. Think if we had already worked on that, any comments from anybody? Are we ready to move on to coroner?
Yeah.
Page 13.
I had a pathologist and autopsy question, $50,000. Something where it jumps in line.
We moved it down to 44,000. Is that what we put it at, I believe?
I'm sorry, the pathology?
Yeah, pathologist and autopsy. Line 30, uh, 30401.
So 41,000?
Yeah. That's what we had done previously. And then, uh, transportation cost, we just took it down 150 dollars is what's in my notes, is that what's...
Transportation cost from 3,500 to how much?
Uh, minus, we took it down 150 dollars.
So 3,350.
Yeah, I don't know why we designated that amount, but that's what...
You've been extra day off.
And then, uh, autopsy panels, we moved down to the very last line because it was on there twice. You see that?
Yeah, we took it from the 20401 down to the 3961.
Yeah.
So how much are given for autopsy panels and labs?
Well, it would be 5,000, but it was on there twice, right?
Well, he had only requested it once, but he requested it on the two line instead of the three line.
Yeah. And then, uh, I had a note that, uh, when he becomes full, without Kathy's assistance, she'll go back, the pay will go back down to my case.
Assistant coroner, thanks, yes.
Will go down by case. So... Did anybody else have any other comments on that?
So what's changed, well, your final budget estimate on that?
I'm sorry?
Your final vote down the corner?
Right now, I'm at 94,525.
94,525? Okay, thank you.
Do we do the council now or just move on?
And there's nothing.
Yeah, we're not changing anything. Comments from anyone?
No, that's good. Your range board looks good.
Range board didn't change, right? Okay, the election board, we just went over. Jay?
That's almost all salary.
Yeah.
Same with Casa.
Joe DiCasa?
Well, Casa's all salary, too.
Okay, yeah. Probation is due, that's... Jay, is the probation include a 3% mandatory salary increase?
It does include what the state mandates, yes.
Yeah. Oh, you're fine. I think we just moved on.
The only thing we have on probation would be a pair of juvenile, it hasn't changed.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're at probation.
Yeah, are you good?
Yes.
We have it at a 3% increase, would it be the mandate rate?
That's what I heard, 3%?
Yeah.
From 549?
It's based on years of service, so it's not exactly 3% across. Because if somebody crossed the line from five years to six years, and they're in a new threshold now, so I...
So just be...
But these are the amounts that, based on your seniority, that what's in here for the probation officers are the amounts that were state mandated.
Okay. It's just different, each one may be a little bit different.
Yeah.
Hold on, prosecutor?
Yeah, just a second. Jane, take your step in.
Give me just a second on that one.
On which one?
On probation. Jane, can you, can you back down just for a second? Okay, right there. Okay, I'm fine. Okay. Yeah, I'm okay.
And then one prosecutor?
Yes.
Nothing's changed there in all the salaries.
Yeah, there's not a whole change there. Yeah, there's not a lot of change there.
No, no, it's pretty good.
Comments, anyone?
We're talking about the prosecutor's page?
Yes. Page twenty.
Well, cell phones are asking two thousand dollars, but they haven't used any money. Twenty-four.
Does something else pay for their cellphone?
They got office supplies there too.
Pardon?
They got office supplies listed as well.
James, that fund to where they put them down, and they take money out of for additional someplace?
I'm sorry?
These, uh, funds like with cellphone and office supplies, if they haven't used anything in the past, do they take money out of that when they need additional for something else and use those funds?
I mean, they, they could transfer if they, if they don't use the money that's in that line, they could transfer it to a different line.
But that transfer has to be approved by us, eh?
Yeah, they bring it up for us.
If they go for it.
Why ask for money if you don't have it?
Yeah.
So they can have it there to move it, if they want to later on?
So if, the money stays.
Jim.
If they don't use it, right? It doesn't, okay.
Just reverse back to county general.
So he's five thirty-seven, the highest ever been with depositions.
So...
Now gonna take the cellphone off?
Yes. I say yes, if they haven't used it, we, it's still in there, they can still, they still have.
What about the office supplies? That's what's supposed to be?
You could take him out of here, but now, and when you go to her four D budget, you would need to leave him in four D because they're partially reimbursed by the state. So, like, we can get reimbursed from, for any four D expenditure, so anything that they're going after, child support. So that's why her, her, her budget is one of the few in county general that's gonna have office supplies, and it'll also have, um, perf and social security and Medicare, just because it's reimbursable.
Is the cellphone reimbursable?
No.
I remember her saying on, on office supplies, was she needing some new furniture for her office?
No, that has already been purchased through another fund.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She did mention needing new furniture though, right?
Yeah. But what she had talked about was already purchased.
Yeah, when we get reimbursed for some of those child support expenses, it goes into a special fund, that can only be used to benefit child support, that's where she bought that furniture from.
Okay.
It's an eight thousand fund.
Okay. Any others comments or statements? Question? Recorder.
Looks like they're asking for additional employees.
No.
That's our first deputy.
Yeah, this, the first deputy is currently paid out of the perpetuation fund, she wants to have it paid out at county general.
Have you went down there and seen how many files she's got? It's gonna take forever.
I mean, but the first deputy didn't do the files.
No, no. The first deputy, he, in that office, there's only me and the first deputy.
Right, right.
She's in there every day doing the same stuff that I'm doing, waiting on people.
Right, right.
And then, I mean, we do backfile as we get time.
But you're, it wasn't there, or something that commissioners was doing to get?
We have two, we have a preservationist, we, which we have two right now, because there's twenty-eight hours, and I'm taking full benefit of the full twenty-eight hours. So, uh, to, together...
And that's through the commissioners?
That's through me.
It's her fund, the commissioner?
It's, commissioners are kind of supporting me in this project, because we are way behind.
Right, I mean, way behind.
I'm talking like, most counties are back in the eighteen hundreds, nineteen thirties, we're sitting in nineteen ninety-two.
They're gonna deteriorate by the time we get done.
Yeah, I, we are, so I talked to Steve Fires, um, he is another one that is coming in and giving me quotes on helping me get those books scanned, 'cause one person can't do it. And he said, "A low quote is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars." I mean, we've got a lot of books, and that's just doing our books, that's not even touching our film that's deteriorating. Film has got the, um, the vinegar syndrome, I've been in touch with the state. The state says, "You need to isolate the reels that smell like vinegar and plan to have them replaced as soon as possible. All acetate film will deteriorate and succumb to vinegar syndrome eventually." So like, this is, this is gonna be a continuing problem with the film. But we have film that we've not caught, I mean, it's got, it's got the vinegar syndrome.
The, um, during the budget hearings, and I just wanna...
I know, we talked about sixty thousand dollars.
No, 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 I, and I heard you, because, you know, you and I talked over at Brian's the next day, and you said that you had underestimated the number of films.
Grossly underestimated the film, yes.
You said there was about a hundred and thirty.
In one container, like, in one safe, I, that's not all of them. That is not all of them, that's one safe that I went back and counted that day. We have totes, I bet I've got five or six totes, a few boxes, I mean...
So are we talking about a hundred and thirty per tote, or what are we talking?
I don't know what we're talking per tote.
She's talking about a whole room full of books that needs to be taken care of.
I'm talking about film, we got boxes of film, cases of film, I've not even been able to go through that all.
Sure, I understand.
And then we've got probably, I don't know, I'm gonna say there's probably four hundred books in that room. I mean, if we do twelve books times twenty in a row, um, you're looking at, you're looking at four hundred books all day. So, um, that, that quote for the, where he said, "A low estimate, one sixty," I didn't even have that the other day. Like, that number I was getting like right before I came in here tonight.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I did the math, I mean, you sold me like eight ninety-seven per film.
Per roll of film.
Per roll, right? And then, you know, you said a hundred and thirty, so that's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars right there.
There's still gonna be more though.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
I think she needs to hire it out and get it caught up myself.
Yeah, I mean, uh, there, there was a searcher in there, and if you talk to searchers, they'll tell you, we're so far behind. And it, and if you, so once we get these records all digitized, it's gonna save us in the sense that they're not coming in and using paper, so that's saving us on paper, toner, ink, because they're gonna print from home. Because our record immediately, like, as soon as we validate them and send them out, they're open to the public. I know Kay come in, she talked to me, Tim's come in, talked to me, we talked about the vinegar problem, um, you got military records right now sitting in there, and that's the only copy you got of them.
And what was those blue things and those purple things?
There were, that's film too, that's got the acid, the, the vinegar syndrome.
No, it was a paper affidavits.
Those, oh, those, yeah, the affidavits, the unreported affidavits, yep.
And you said it goes back to eighteen sixteen?
Yeah, well, I mean, all property records are permanent, so they're going back from when we started this county. Yep.
And your first deputy is out of your perpetuation fund?
Right now.
Right now, and...
But I want it paid out of general, I'll continue to pay the two preservationists.
And that's sixty thousand is what I have for, for two.
The preservationists, no, no, you're not sixty thousand of them, they're only making twelve forty an hour, working twenty-eight hours a week, for mine.
I came up with sixty thousand at the last meeting when we had the...
Sixty thousand, I think that's what we were talking about, when we were talking about some of the, um, estimates that I've got on getting some of our stuff done.
So, why can't you hire them full-time to do it? If you're needing it done that bad and you get two, why can't they do anything about that?
I mean, I guess, even hiring them full-time, I mean, I'm, we're not gonna make a dent in it, when we can have somebody working on it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, getting it done. I mean, like, they're taking on the smaller stuff.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, one, you said works twelve hours, and one works, like...
So one is working like twenty-one hours, and the other's working like seven.
Okay.
Here's the problem you're gonna run into. Nobody wants to work for twelve forty an hour when they can go to Walmart and work for fifteen. I'm just being real.
To me, twenty-eight hours a week for two people, you're not gonna, you're not accomplishing what, what you're trying to get done.
They're, they're getting a lot done. They, they are, I mean, like...
But if you times that by two people, and if you're taking it out of your preser, uh, perpetuation fund anyway, wouldn't you get more done by doing that?
Oh, well, if you wanted to give me a part-time person or a full-time person, I'm willing to take them.
No, I'm talking about out of your perpetuation.
I'm willing to take them, but it's still not gonna do what we need to get done, I mean, we got a lot to get done.
It's so far behind.
We are so...
I get it, but what I'm saying is, if you have two people working twenty-eight hours, and out of the perpetuation fund, and she can have two twenty-eight hour employees, you're gonna get double done in a week.
And she's saying I still am gonna get, make a dent.
It ain't gonna get it done, but it's gonna, it will...
It's gonna get more done.
It's gonna double it up.
It's going to increase it, times two.
It's, it's gonna get more done.
Right, that's all I'm saying, I mean, and we keep saying when we're so far behind, we're so far behind, whoop!
Yeah.
Then let's do something, and use a perpetuation fund to do that.
We're working with that fund to do what it was supposed to do, but we can get a lot done quicker, I mean, the longer we let some film sit there, the longer it is deteriorating.
But the, but the film has to go out.
The film, yeah, like, because the film, like, it's kinda like a mold, once that syndrome starts, it starts to affect every film that's, that's near it.
All I'm saying is she needs more stuff done, or it needs to be hired out, is all I'm saying.
You're gonna, you're gonna get done so much quicker, because...
So you wanted to hire someone out, another company to get them, so?
At that point...
You haven't said that to me, I, that's the first time for that.
That's why we're getting estimates, yeah.
Okay, no.
Yeah, that's why we're getting estimates.
I didn't know that's what you were talking about, and I'm like, okay, what?
Because then they're gonna, they're gonna get it all scanned, and then we're going to index it and validate it, and we're gonna be able to get it out quicker. Those, those preservationists that we've got, instead of them having to scan it, index it, validate it, and all that, that company's gonna do it, and then we're gonna index it, validate it, and get it out.
So on average, how much revenue do you get into that perpetuation fund a year?
It should be on that one sheet there.
I mean, I'm looking at, you know, a little under sixty thousand dollars a year you get in the perpetuation fund every year.
But you don't mind deleting it, because you still wanna make sure that you got...
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah.
Right? All I'm saying is that you get a lot of revenue into that fund, it, the last report I'm looking at, um, was, hang on a minute. It just looked like at the end of July, you had a balance of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in there.
But if we spend a hundred and sixty of it in scanning books, that leaves us with...
How long do you think it'll take to get this, do you think it'll take all year to get this done?
I think you got years worth of projects.
Even what you're sending out, you're talking, you're saying it's gonna take years to get that done?
I think, I think that if we get a company on it, I still think we're looking at a couple of years.
For them?
Yeah, it's a lot of books.
You're talking about the book, no, what about the film?
The film, I think it'll, I think that they will start working on it immediately, probably within a year.
You don't even have the equipment to do the film, do you?
No. No, I can't remake film.
Yeah.
We have to have that hired out.
I mean, you can't even read the film still, can you?
I, we can read some of the films, not all of them, but we don't have, like, what we're losing right now, we don't have the money to, to remake, or we don't have the means to remake it.
So they're gonna remake them?
Yeah, they're gonna have to remake it.
And then also digitize them, so...
Because we have to have two copies.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
We have, yeah, we have to have two copies, and so ideally, like, even, when we, once we get two copies, a copy should be stored offsite, so if the courthouse were to burn, or something like that, we have a backup.
Gotcha. So you have a hard copy and a digital copy?
Right.
It's gotta be done.
It has to be done.
Well, my thing is, how much is it gonna cost?
That, that's what, that's what we're getting estimates, that's what I'm doing.
And, and, so I say we, when she gets the cost, bring them in.
Have you lost records?
Have we lost records? We have records right now that I just done, um, that my understanding is, like, what we done was the only copy we have. But, I mean, we could lose records at any time.
Melissa, what about the missing books?
I'm working on those, I'm working on finding those, um, I've inventoried the books, and, um, I gotta go over to the canal house, I guess, when the, uh, there was some courthouse remodel happened, books were taken, stuff was taken to the canal house. Thinking it may be over there, I've not had opportunity to get over there yet, to look, I have, I have to get it in.
Trouble getting into the canal house?
I just have to have someone to call me, and Dale's supposed to be working on getting me in there.
Okay.
'Cause I don't have a key to get in there.
And I mean, that's, that's needed pretty quick, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, 'cause once we start, we wanna have those books too.
And I, I wonder why he's not?
I can't answer for that. Can't answer for that.
Right, needs to be done.
It does need to be done.
You need to get in the canal house.
And we need to, and we need to get them scanned, and we need to get the film taken care of.
And the records out of the basement too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those are permanent.
Yes.
To my knowledge, the recorder's office doesn't have any records over in the jail basement. Yeah, thankfully, thank God.
Okay, so...
No offense to the jail, but...
Until we get the estimates, my suggestion is move on.
Okay.
'Cause we can't determine something that we don't know.
No.
Mr. Mutton, can you help her get in the canal house?
See what we can do.
ASAP?
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to sheriff, page twenty-two.
The only thing outside of salaries is cars and gas and diesel.
Cars hadn't changed.
Gas and diesel makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
So we gonna let the sheriff off?
Right now. For now.
For now, okay.
Soil and water, page twenty-three. Didn't change it. Do what?
Well, this is where they're, this is one of those that was off because of an illness, right? And so I think they're wanting a part-time person.
Yes. Which was another fourteen-five, wasn't it?
Yeah, the, in the notes column on your screen, it shows what they actually asked for, what they wanted.
Okay.
That's part-time.
So, I believe they have a full-time employee.
Full-time?
Okay. I thought I heard someone say they wanted a part-time. They have part-time now.
I thought they split it with Union County.
They have been sharing one with Union County, but they want their own. Yeah, because in the notes, I've got their biggest request was to restore a full-time employee. They used to have one, but their employee was cut at the same in twenty-twelve, when all those other cuts were made to other offices. They said that they are the only county in the state of Indiana that does not have a full-time staff member.
Was it Union County has half the staff number?
Everything else stays the same.
So you're looking at a forty-eight-eight, forty budget, huh? A request?
Yeah, they're asking for additional thirty-four, three forty. Is that for that?
Office manager.
Office manager.
Do what?
He's just repeating.
Okay.
Well. I think we take it out for now.
I think she's already willing to do that with the change in salaries. The additional office manager they want, that'd be left in there?
I don't know. What do you all think? I can do whatever.
Who was the one gentleman that always took care of that? What was his name?
Volunteers, I think, okay.
I wasn't here for that.
They're all volunteers.
They're all volunteers?
Yeah.
What was his pay?
We didn't pay him. He was paid through the state.
Okay.
Do we know what?
I don't know what the state paid him. Just curious.
What'd you guys say? Couldn't hear you down here.
I do not know. She asked if I knew what the state paid David Caldwell.
David Caldwell retired, that's why there's no one there. I was just curious what his pay was, what the state paid him.
I know that Union County and them have been splitting that whole thing, project.
Splitting it with who?
The saltwater, Union County paid, kind of, they've been doing that together for years. I don't know.
What do you think, Scott?
So the state can't pay, is there a reason the state won't pay someone else?
They're county. I mean, that's sort of like in the courts, they pay the judge, but they don't pay anybody else. I mean, I think they cover the officer themselves, but not any office staff.
David Caldwell was through the state?
Yeah, like, we did not pay him.
Okay.
And we're not paying the guy that's there now. I mean, we pay the secretary, the clerical.
I thought they were all volunteer.
We've been paying that line, that's a ten thousand contractual services line, that's where we have been paying that person.
That's clerical?
Yes. And they've had one person that's been shared between Franklin, or, I'm sorry, Fayette County and Union County.
I don't know. I think to be consistent, we take it out for now, but if we end up, that we feel like with some of the other stuff that we're doing, we can afford it, then we go back.
Sounds like playing me.
Yeah. I couldn't hear you. What'd you say, Scott?
I'm thinking to be consistent with what we're doing with everything else, we take it out right now. And if in the end, we feel like we can add it back in, then we add it back in later.
I'm good with that.
Superior Court, page twenty-four.
Had the interpreter six thousand dollars. We've never had to use that much before.
Yep, we got a lot of people coming in. Don't speak English.
And they do have electronic devices that can translate too, if that pays.
Well, I know that. It's just that the highest we've paid was twenty-two hundred dollars.
Well, this year, we've already spent three, and he just came for an additional appropriation at your last meeting.
Yeah, we've already spent thirty-one hundred, twelve dollars this year.
And what, we just gave it?
Six thousand.
I would leave it at six.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we may end up doing an additional appropriation next year.
And we could ask him if there's an electronic device that could do it, too.
Hmm, that'd be nice.
Judge Branstadter said he uses.
Yeah, that's the Pauper.
Judge Branstadter?
Contracts, well, twenty thousand.
Sometimes, if you.
That's pretty well on target, twenty thousand for Pauper terms.
Deposition's at four thousand. Highest has been two thousand, and so I guess it's not too far out of line.
That's because of the murder trials they've been having, he explained.
Whatever you're doing, you could have brought a sandwich.
The mental health evaluations are a little high, but, you know, given what we had to spend in twenty-twenty-three, some of the other things we got going on, you're probably not bad.
There's some crazy people in there.
Yeah, well, I don't doubt that. Lodging and meals is a little high, but I don't know how you feel about that. Lodging and meals is down the sheriff's budget? Well, you know, they're lodging meals in the circuitry budget. I think we took that one down.
Yeah, because the most that was spent, twenty-three, was a hundred and eighteen dollars.
I would take it down.
Take it down a thousand.
Lodging and meals, take it to a thousand.
Twenty-five hundred?
No, take it down to one thousand.
One thousand? That's all the wages.
Now, we have law book line items, or, it's not that different than what Hubbs was, I don't think.
Yeah, and in twenty-twenty, they spent three hundred and ninety-four dollars, so.
I think it's pretty close. That's true. Actually, you know, Judge Branstadter's budget put out to seven hundred.
Yeah, just a minute. You said Branstadter's was what?
Branstadter's law books was seven hundred, so.
And he spent five hundred and seventy-two in twenty-four so far.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm okay with leaving the law books alone, and just letting Judge treat, you know, if he feels like four hundred's fine, then we put in four hundred.
Yeah. Okay. Surveyor, page twenty-five.
Not too much there.
Three thousand dollars increase on the elected official.
Well, you take everything back, right, so. Outside of salaries, everything's the same.
I have a note, copy of it for forty-five hundred. Where was that money coming from? He shares that with someone, but it's me.
He had six thousand in this year's budget, so that'll come out of the money that you gave him.
Okay.
For this year.
Okay.
It's this six right there.
Okay. Treasurer.
Don't worry, go through that.
Don't worry.
Don't worry, treasurer. Do we wanna talk about the treasurer?
I don't know. Did you do it before I got here?
She's requested an extra hundred for service contracts, otherwise everything is the same as the prior year.
So it's just a hundred dollars?
I took the raises out.
Rest of it's all wages.
Okay, so it basically would be the same, right? Okay, Veterans Service Officer, page twenty-seven.
You know, this is something that the city needs to start helping us on. They just flipped the cost of this, so he's a full-time person, since he does all the work for the people that live in the city.
Go get it done.
He hasn't asked for an increase anyway.
Well, the twenty-twenty-five notes column is what he.
I was in the hospital at the time, and all this.
Right.
Five thousand dollars.
Okay, so there's five thousand dollars.
Yeah, look on the twenty-five notes there.
Okay. I'm just saying, since he services all the people in the city as well, this job should be changed to full-time, and the city pays half and we pay half.
Go get it done.
I don't have enough authority. That would be a Dale and Dale. Dale, can you hear me?
No.
So it was a five thousand dollar.
I said, your veterans service officer.
Somebody asked for it, I didn't.
Your veterans service officer should be a full-time position. City pays half, we pay half.
Well, that's certainly a concept, if you can get any cooperation across the street.
Well, this veterans service officer told us, if I'm not mistaken, that he needs a vehicle to transport people with, and VA will own the vehicle, and they had to trade it in after a hundred thousand miles, is that right?
Correct. Or if you go over a hundred thousand miles for the vehicles over ten years.
And you've talked to Larkin Ford?
I have.
And they not willing to help out?
Deaf ears.
We need to call Barry Larkin. That's a weak salary for him.
I mean, I'm sure Mr. Larkin has quite the stampede of cars, but it's just. I talked to Mr. Redman about it, and, you know, here's the difference. If the VA owns the, the VA owns the vehicle, then there's rules, a lot of them, who can drive it, where it can go. I can't even assist you to get into the vehicle. I can't touch you. So it's like, hey, you just gotta get up in there, man. Sorry.
It's a catch-twenty-two situation, you can't win.
It, to a certain extent, it is. Then I have to have volunteers to drive, and those volunteers have to be trained and qualified through the VA. But the VA pays for the gas, the VA pays for a cell phone, so they can get ahold of us, and we can call if we're on the road in an emergency situation. They pay, they do the maintenance on the vehicle. However, that's all great and good, but the county's portion of that vehicle would be anywhere, what was fifteen to twenty, I would say now it's probably anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five, with the increase in everything in the world. That's what we're looking at. That would be the county's half, and the county does not own the vehicle. They don't control it, they don't, we, we're at the mercy of the Veterans Administration, because they put the rest of the half in on that vehicle, and they maintain it. I've talked to the mayor about this, and I've asked the VA with the old vehicles, can we buy them? The answer was no, we're not selling them back to the counties. That's not what they do. That money goes to the Veterans Administration. And this predates everybody here, all of, when these vehicles are bought and paid for and all that other stuff. And the reason why, but it is a county-run program, which means it's my responsibility. Previous veterans service officers didn't get involved. My predecessor wasn't involved in it, because other veterans were running it. Volunteers were running that program. They took care of the vehicles. They are the ones that took, they're the ones that talked to the VA. My predecessor didn't have to do that, but the predecessor before that was managing it through the office. When Norma Buckley was here, she ran that program. That was one of her things she did as the assistant in there. So that's where all that, and it all came to head with COVID. And it all came to a bigger head when the last person who was volunteering to drive refused to take the COVID shot. And I don't blame the man, he's in his seventies. But it's not an option for a volunteer at the VA. We don't get religious preference, and we don't get medical preference, like you do if you're an employee at the VA. That was run all the way up the chain to the top of the VA, and they're big lawyers. They said, nope, that's the way it's gonna be, so we didn't have a choice. I already had the vaccination. It's not a big deal for me. I've been a pincushion for the last thirty-five years. But you can't make somebody do it, which, but they can say, you're not authorized to drive. So it got brought to my attention, because now it's back into where it's all run from, from the beginning.
It's called government.
It is, but I've talked about this since day one, since I've been. This is what the option is. The vehicle that used to be issued out to the veterans service office was taken back and reissued out, but it went to the animal shelter. Because my predecessor took a year's worth of, they took a year, or, they went on orders for a year to go to Iraq and Afghanistan. So that vehicle was sitting, it needed to be utilized from somebody else. That's where the vehicle went. I would never want to take that away from them, when that's his vehicle that he was using, before he got his other ones. I understand all that. So what I did is a bloody given, a bloody arrived, because I'm not gonna have my brothers and sisters missing appointments and potentially something be so critical for them that it's a life or death issue. So I've got a band of brothers and sisters together, and they volunteered to do it. I vet them to make sure that there's nothing going on with them criminally or medically that would become a problem. But that's my, our vehicles, our gas, well, I was the one paying for the gas, out of my own pocket. They come in, hey, I'll meet you at the gas station, I'll fill your tank up. They can, when they go to the VA, they can go to the front desk, say, I'm the driver for Fayette County, they can get a meal ticket. So at least they can eat while they're out there on the road.
So this time, all we can help you with is gas money, right?
Which is why I asked for an increase of two thousand dollars.
Okay.
On that one line. And here's the reason, here's my logic, it may not be good, or somebody may have a better, all right? I average three trips, round trips, to the VAs a month, on average.
Indianapolis?
Indianapolis, Dayton, and Cincinnati. My, most, ninety-five percent of the people here go to Dayton, but it doesn't matter where they go. But. If the VA's a VA van, I can't do compensation and pension exams, so them getting benefits. I'm not allowed to take them in a VA van. I can take them if it's a county vehicle, or if it's my own. I can take them to any appointment, it doesn't matter. But the cost of a vehicle, we're talking maintenance, wheels, I mean, sixteen hundred bucks just for a set of wheels for one car for someone. So I decided it's cheaper for me to get mileage overall than trying to locate a vehicle and pay for it, because who's paying for it? I'm gonna have to get donations, and I don't know. I'm a one-man band, so it's hard. And I'm not saying it's impossible, I just have to sacrifice more time.
I guarantee the armistice got all kinds of used tanks you could use.
Well, I'm a ship guy, so, or fighter jet plane, but that's the, that's the. Well, I'm a ship guy, so, or fighter jet plane, but, but that's the, that's the reason for my ask, is to reimburse, get reimbursed per mileage for me and my volunteers. On average, three a month. And I went to the three with what the allotment is per mileage. It's 106 miles round trip today.
Okay.
It's 53 miles from Constance. So that's, was my ask on that line. The only other ask was increase in salary.
Okay.
This is probably, first of all, I appreciate what you're doing for the vets. When I got a chance to walk on Omaha Beach last year, it was a life-changing moment, so I appreciate that. But this is me being a cynic and knowing that there are a lot of lawyers in this world. Commissioners, have you looked into what the county's liability would be if, if Ron were to get into an accident carrying a veteran to the VA? And should, have you looked into, does he have the Bureau Motor Vehicle credential to handle that? Type of thing? I mean, I, I would think that's a commissioner role to make sure that that's offering mileage would even be plausible. You know, I mean, I understand Ron kind of looks at it as a buddy doing, doing a favor for a buddy, but there are a lot of lawyers in this world. You know?
I can tell you, he is not covered on the county's insurance for that purpose, because it is not part of his job description.
It isn't, right?
No. And I do want to bring this up right now. We have another issue with Ron's office. There, the EMA requested a chairlift, because people, veterans, different ones, cannot even come to Ron's office, because they do not have accessibility. And that is something that needs to be addressed, and the same way with EMA's office and probation. There is not, there's not a public restroom that's available to them, and they have to send them across the street to Speedway, or the courthouse, wherever there's a public bathroom. And I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed immediately by commissioners or whoever. Did you realize that?
Yes, Ron and I have talked about those issues before. Realistically, the only, the only feasible remedy to that would be to relocate his office to this building. And that would require moving someone in this building across the street.
But you're running into the same situation. It has to have public access.
Well, we currently meet all the requirements for public access here in this building.
No, I'm talking about for EMA, probation, veterans, they don't meet ADA. Wheelchair access.
They're, they're, they're talking about specifically at the annex.
Yeah.
Everybody, including the Veteran Service Officer. Well, that's true. It's been probably at least 10 or 12 years ago was the last time there was a serious discussion about fixing the elevator in that building. And at that time, the replacement cost was a little over $100,000. We simply didn't have the money to do it with. So we just clicked off the breaker for the maintenance. We don't use it, don't even try to use it. To make that, you know, that building was built in 1880. There was no such thing as ADA requirements back then. It's a useful building to us, now it, I don't know, I don't know if it could be even made completely ADA compliant or not. But there again, I guess anything's possible with enough money. You folks control that, you decide where it's spent. Now, you, you do know, don't you, why Ron wasn't built in the day?
Didn't have commissioners in.
Ron didn't have the money to do it at one time, neither did we.
I can tell you from my standpoint, it is, and it has become more of an issue recently, with veterans who have heart issues, things like that, they just can't climb stairs. So short of having them come back, because they can't utilize the restrooms, or their dependents can't utilize the restrooms, or, you know, some of them go across the street, some of them, you know, it's, it just depends. It is fix, it's, we're just in a bad, it's a, it's a tough location.
Needs to be fixed.
It does. Because, I mean, hell, I, I'd have struck myself. I can't even climb stairs, I'm dead. But, I mean, it's, I've run into more and more people having that issue.
Needs to be fixed.
Moving over here to where, and I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying, it's people who deal with customer service here in this building, okay, so where do you put them, right? The only one that makes somewhat sense, because they don't deal with customers, because their customers are deceased, is the corridor. How that works, I don't know. Maybe they have to be here, I don't know all the rules, but it's, me moving over here would make more sense, because I deal with the recorder, I deal with the auditor's office, I deal with the clerk's office, I deal with healthcare, the health services office. So it does make sense to move me in this building, because it is compliant. It may not be the most convenient for people, but that's not the point. It's, I can get people with wheelchairs, walkers, and scooters in here.
So we have an elevator in the annex that doesn't work, right?
Correct.
And to add on to Ron's point, the building itself's not compliant. So you cannot back a wheelchair up next to the toilet and transfer somebody that is handicapped or a handicap from the wheelchair to the toilet. There's not enough room between the wall and the commode. So that's another issue that would have to be addressed to make that building ADA compliant. And having probationers go in there, if the building's open to the public, it has to be ADA compliant. If not, then we're probably just waiting for somebody from OSHA or something to come in and start mandating what we do. So it's the elevator, it's, it's public access, the only way to avoid that is move everybody out of that building and put them somewhere that has, is ADA compliant.
Well, that's, I mean, at this point, I mean, if, if we want to address ADA issues in the annex, then we're gonna have to find the money for it. But who, who's in what office is a commissioner thing. So getting back to my last question was, you know, have you folks looked into, you know, is it plausible for us to? The question I've got is, is it plausible to offer mileage for Ron to do this kind of thing? If you folks are in a situation where he's not covered by the county insurance when, when he's doing this kind of activity?
Well, the insurance matter, I can assure you that on my part, no, I have not asked legal counsel any questions about that. But as far as transporting people to doctor appointments and such that I know Ron has done, that is not, that is not included in his county job description. We, we, as an employer, we do not require him to do that.
I understand.
And I admire Ron for doing that.
Me too. Ron, if, does that VA come in there even if you're leasing the vehicle? There's ownerships by the auto dealer.
No. Well... Okay.
So if the county leases the vehicle...
So let me address a couple of issues right now. One, what's in my job description? It isn't.
Ron, I'm looking right at your job description. It is not.
Not for me personally to do it, but to manage the program. So it's a pro, it's a county program. So for us to even request that, I mean, we can turn it off and say, there is no, there is no transportation whatsoever.
Well, I agree.
My job description was initially written in 1997.
We're not asking that, Ron.
No, no, what I'm saying is, it hasn't even been revised since 2011. That's what I plan on doing now. It needs to be revised. There's a lot of things that aren't in my county job description that we do. So that's another issue. I understand that.
Yeah.
But, yes, I understand your point, and it's, I, I'm on board 100%. That needs to be readdressed.
Needs to be addressed.
Whatever, modified, whatever the case is, and if I can't be funded by that, then I gotta find a different way.
I got you.
So I'm fully covered on insurance. If something happens to me on the road, I'm covered. But here's the thing, even driving around in town, going to funerals, or going to a nursing home, or going to a veteran's home that has completely been ridden and can't leave their house, I have the appointment tomorrow for that. That's still...
But you understand my...
No, no, I understand, but wouldn't I be entitled, shouldn't I be entitled to mileage to go do my job within the county?
Yes.
That's, I understand the other part, but, well, whose car it is...
Right.
Is that.
I got you.
But...
The county's veteran officer should be taking care of our veterans in our county, and we should be giving him what he needs and take care of our veterans.
Absolutely.
Bottom line.
Absolutely.
And I've talked to Mr. Redmond, and he's willing to work with me to do it. He, he just can't get me a car for free. If somebody wanted to donate one, sure, great, but it has to be in a functional way.
Right.
I, no, it does not have to be brand new. I, like, when, there was the Sheriff's Department. When they were swapping out vehicles, they had extra vehicles. So I asked to be put on the list, if there's one that's remaining, could I get that? It's, it just didn't work out, and that's okay. There's other, there's other priorities in this county. The other option was, and I'm still gonna do it, I just, our schedules haven't meshed yet, but I'm gonna try again tomorrow. The probation department has a vehicle. And I understand that's their vehicle, they go do what they need to do with it. But for me to ask for it part-time, when I need it, is it feasible, as long as they're not using it? Mrs. Cranfield offered up her vehicle from her business for me to utilize that to take these people to and from. It, her only ask was, Ron, please vet them and make sure that they're good, they have clean driving records, they have their own personal insurance, full coverage, and that I put gas in. I take out, I put back what I take out. That's it. That was what I'm doing. So it's just, that's funded by me personally. And if it's gonna continue that way, that's fine, but my job description is gonna get rewritten. But the approval of the commissioner's.
You better approve that.
No, I'm not even...
I'm talking, I was pointing Dale.
I'm gonna make modifications, and then me and Mr., me and Mr. Strong talked about it, and I told him, everything that I put down is gonna go through them, and for their approval, and go through that. But I'm not gonna put down, I'm not, I'm not asking for the money here, I'm just asking for, so I'm not taking it out of my own business accounts, which I no longer have.
Well...
But that's, then that could be, that's probably gonna have to be tabled for another time, or if things get...
We got, there's discussions that need to be on your, on your end. Building, I mean, there, there's a lot to be considered, because we definitely want to be compliant with what we're supposed to do.
And I need to come talk to all three of the commissioners as a group in regards to the ADA stuff, too.
Do you want to continue? It's almost 8 o'clock. Do you want to go ahead? Or do you want to recess and set another date?
It gets dark, you'll have to take me home.
Before we recess, I need to correct myself on something, as I was texting Brian Sasser. When I said earlier, I thought David Caldwell was paid through the state, he said David Caldwell was a volunteer. They do have one state-paid person that advises them, but when David was on that board, he was...
Okay, so David was a volunteer. He was a volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there is one paid person, the, the one gal that was here, Tara Henry, he said she is a paid person from, paid by the state. She advises her board, but she's not on their board, she's just an advisor and has many other duties, so...
Jane, you need to pull this together.
So when I'm, when I'm wrong, I'm best enough.
Okay, well, thank you. I would be in favor, Jane, or Sharon, to recess and go back tomorrow night.
I want to stay till 10:00.
You, you want to stay?
Tomorrow night, give you time to fill all the facts, all these together, Jane.
I was making changes while you were talking, so I'm caught up.
You're caught up.
I was just asking you. So... I'll make it. It's not, I'm just saying, I would be good to recess tomorrow night. That's my opinion. Okay. Okay.
Clock to two going.
I'm with her.
Okay, so someone wants to make a motion? Scott. And do we...
I don't know that I can be here tomorrow night, but...
Now, we can go on, I'm, I'm, we can take a vote on everybody, do a...
Well, we can go Thursday night.
Skip a night and go Thursday night.
Yeah.
That works, Scott.
Does that work for everybody? What do you think? You want to stay?
I'll break, I'll break the man. Have you decided? I'm okay with Thursday.
Does that work for everybody?
I can. Do Thursday.
You can't do Thursday.
Jane, we need Jane here. She can't do Thursday.
Oh, Jane.
Jane, come on. For pity's sake, you're not a team player, I can...
I can stay tonight. I can do Wednesday.
I mean, I'm okay to stay, I just want everybody else to be okay with that.
I can do Friday. I just can't do Thursday.
I'm ready to recess.
Do Friday.
Friday? Mike?
Friday has a football game tomorrow morning.
How about Wednesday, tomorrow night?
No, Jane.
I can do tomorrow.
Somebody else said they cannot.
No, I can do...
Scott cannot do tomorrow night.
You can't even zoom in?
I'll be pretty late.
We can do it at 6 o'clock in the morning.
Can everybody else do tomorrow night?
Yes.
We have to have a... Yes. Make sure. Can you do tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night?
Okay.
Yeah.
I just hate to exclude Scott.
Oh. Yeah, we miss you, Scott. Bless your heart.
Okay.
At least, at least somebody misses me.
There'll be plenty left to do.
We miss you, Scott.
All right, someone make a motion to recess till tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock? Is it 5?
I hope you say recess till tomorrow night.
Okay, recess until 5:00 PM Wednesday.
Tomorrow night.
Okay. See everybody tomorrow night, 5:00 PM, and I won't be late.